All right, good evening and welcome to the February twentieth twenty twenty-four meeting of the Hickory City Council. At this time, I would like to ask the administrative director, Mr. Kyle Sorito from Hickory Bible Church, to the podium for our invocation. I'll ask that if you're able to please stand for the invocation and remain standing after the invocation for the pledge of allegiance. Kyle, we want to thank you for being here this evening.
Well, let's pray. Almighty God, Father, from whom every family in heaven and on earth derives its name, you have given us, Lord, this good land, complete with liberties and provisions for our well-being and prosperity. Lord, you are the wisdom behind every wise law, the justice behind every right judgment, the truth behind every fact. And so I pray that you would make us people who live in unity, who live in righteousness, who live in wisdom, in your justice and truth, Lord. Grant our community leaders discernment as they look back, insight as they look ahead, and humility in planning their next steps. In our prosperity, Lord, fill our hearts with thankfulness. In the day of trouble, grant us steadfastness that clings to you. Father, thank you that even knowing that every human being from birth has made no end of transgressing your law, perverting your justice, denying your truth, Lord, you offer us your son, who lived in perfect righteousness, justice, and truth, and yet died as a criminal, that your servants who trust in him may have forgiveness by his death and resurrection from the dead. Lord, I pray for all who do not know your son, Lord Jesus Christ, who is our wisdom and hope, that they may know him. And, Lord, I pray that we may find union through you. And so, Lord, to you, our God and our Father, we pray. And, Lord, I pray that you would give us the joy of knowing you. Every human idea and ideal will fade, but only you and your word endure. Lord, in your son's holy and precious name, I pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All right, let's see. Start off this evening, we have two of our council members that are absent this evening, and unfortunately, both of them are dealing with a death in their family. So obviously, they're not here this evening. So we just ask that you would remember them in your thoughts and prayers as they're not able to be here this afternoon. Also, I would like to recognize the members of troop number seven twenty-six, the Church of Ascension, that are here with us this evening. I'm going to give them an opportunity to stand and introduce themselves. And I think I know why they're here, but maybe they can tell us what it is that brings them here to our council meeting this evening. So if you would, we'll start with the young lady on the left. And I would imagine she is the denma. I don't know, do they still call them den mothers?
Well, we're den mothers.
Oh, okay. Okay, all right.
Scout master.
Scout leader for Boy Scout troop seven twenty-six, and have three of our members who are working on the communications merit badge, and this is what they also wanted to comply with.
All right.
I'm basic early. I go to Hickory Christian Academy School, and like Jen said, work on the communication merit badge.
I'm under eyes, I'm also working on communication merit badge.
I'm Asian, and I'm also working on communication merit badge.
All right, well, welcome. We appreciate you being here, and you're welcome to come back anytime. So thank you. All right, let's see. We don't have any other special presentations this evening, so we'll move along to persons requesting to be heard. We always afford an opportunity to anyone that would like to address the council, to be able to do that at the beginning of our meeting. So at this time, if you would like to address the council, we would certainly allow you to be able to do that. We just ask that you come to the podium, that you state your name and address, and that you limit your conversation to three minutes or less. So if you would like to be able to do that, you can approach the podium at this time.
Hello. Daria Jackson, address one three three seventeen street southeast apartment B. Yes, I hear about the little intersection off the lighter end of Springs Road where a shirt tape is about to, right, where they got the new Dollar General. If you get in that area, there's going to be an accident. It's going to be bad because you got people coming to try to get in Dollar General, and then you got people coming out of that little convenience store, and you got people shooting out of Family Dollar's little parking lot. And I almost saw an accident the other day. So it's something that needs to be looked at. It's too much, it's too much trying to come in and out right there.
All right, thank you, Daria. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to address the council? All right, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda. The next item on our agenda is the approval of our regular meeting of February the sixth twenty twenty-four. I'll entertain a motion or discussion.
Move approval of the minutes.
Second.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign. All right, that carries unanimously. Item number seven on our agenda is a reaffirmation ratification on second reading. Once again, I'll entertain a motion or discussion.
So moved.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign?
He's got to read.
All right, that carries unanimously as well. Item number eight is our consent agenda. I'll ask if there's any member of staff or council that would like to have any items removed from the consent agenda.
Move approval of the consent agenda.
All right, so a motion, we have a second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? All right, the consent agenda passes unanimously. We're going to move on to, we don't have any public hearings this evening. We do have a departmental report, so to introduce our one and only departmental report this evening, I'll turn it over to our city manager, Mr. Warren Wood.
Mayor Gass, members of the city council. Tonight, we will hear an update on the expansion and renovations at the Hickory Metro Convention Center, and it'll be presented by CEO Mandy Hildebrand.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. It's great to be here, Mayor Gass, council members, Mr. Swanson, Mr. Woods. It's always fun to be in this chamber. And it looks beautiful, by the way. It's updated tremendously well. Tonight with me also is no stranger, Sarah Davis Jones, who's our director of sales and marketing, but also she's known with a lot of other community hats that she wears.
Is Sarah going to sing a song tonight?
Well, if you request it, she just may.
Okay.
So this was, this is an update. It's been nine months since we broke ground, when we were all there with hard hats on. That seems like yesterday. And it's been five months of the day since I came and gave a presentation about where we were. That's when we had videos, and we were talking about how excited we were about concrete and other things like that. We've moved quite forward since then. So just to focus on three things, just to give you an update, just like Mr. Wood said, on the renovation and the addition, also give you an update on convention center updates. I think you will be pleasantly surprised when I give you an update on the events that are happening there and our numbers. And number three, just to update you on some marketing successes we've had, that I think you'll all be excited about as well. So our first slide here, these pictures were taken Thursday of last week, and there's already been a lot of process, a lot of progress since then. On the, here we have the Hickory hallway meeting room. So just to kind of remind you where this is, in the meeting, the original part of the building, we have this big hallway, which can also be a place where vendors set up. There was some underutilized space that had some natural light. And so your first picture you see on your left is an additional meeting room. Probably it will seat anywhere between sixteen and twenty-six people, depending on how it's set up. It's going to be a great small room that's very much needed, especially would have been great today. We have the North Carolina Cattlemen Association here, and that's a space that they'll definitely be able to use in the future. On the right side, of course, you see, you notice, you probably know exactly where that is when you come into the convention center. There on the right, the display screen. So we can match the updated part of the Catawba space and the rent and the expansion space. We wanted it all to match and to look all as one group. And I'm going to tell you a little bit more about how we're going to update that area as well in the future. This is, they're going to add some shiplap. And as we are speaking right now, Sarah and I were leaving the building, and the carpenter was coming in to put shiplap, to kind of really get that ready to go, so we'll have our display screen. So we're all going to, we have till Thursday at lunchtime to do that. So that's pretty exciting there. Our next picture, wow, this is a lot. Our Catawba meeting room, of course, we know that room. That's the room we were in the day of the groundbreaking. This was the two thousand and five addition. That was the addition in two thousand and five because the city of Hickory wanted to host the North Carolina League of Municipalities. And as we know, since they, since they came in two thousand and five, they've been three times, and they want to come again in a couple of years. That's how much that organization enjoys coming to our community. So in this space, you're going to see the lighting, the lighting grids. What's really going to be beneficial in that space is the ceilings will not be so tall, and also the lighting will be much better, and the sound will be much better. I'll tell you a little bit about that, too, in a minute as well. The color scheme, you can see the paint, the molding, so it looks really well. It's coming along. On the right side, the Catawba meeting space, the meeting rooms. As you know, when you go in, there's going to be two meeting rooms. One of the things, as Sarah talks to meeting planners on a routine basis, they need meeting spaces, and they want them already set up a lot of times with the great technology, where you just, just like this, plug in, you go. So that's going to happen in our two meeting rooms, those two meeting rooms as well. As you can see, it's going to be much more upscale. The carpet's going to be beautiful. The lighting's going to work really well in there. See, the next pictures we have, the Catawba hallway restroom. Now, we think, we're really excited about these restrooms. Look how beautiful they are. I told my husband, we need to redo, all of our bathrooms will look just like that. They look beautiful. So they are absolutely stunning, really, the marble work and the tile and the, really the people that have been working on this restroom, they take it as their own. So this, we do have it, we, because of the expansion, we had to have, add actually eighteen more women restrooms stalls, and we had to add nine men. That's just the number from the code, don't know why. So we'll have plenty of restrooms to service, the Catawba section, as well as the new expansion. So you see the hallway there. So last, last time, I was so excited about concrete and the roof. Now we're talking about the restroom tile. This is really amazing, too. I cannot wait till you all come to the convention center to see this for yourself as well. On the left side, of course, that's a skylight. There's two, and this is the hallway. So just to kind of remember where this is, we've got the Catawba space we just talked to. There's a hallway, and then the, and then the big thirty-five thousand square foot space. This is one of two skylights that are going to be on that hallway. If you look, that is the northwest entrance, which, as we were leaving just a few minutes ago, all the windows were being put up in the furniture hall of fame slash pre, where we're going to have a lot of different receptions around. So a lot of things have happened in the past three days. And on the right, it's really hard to expand, explain. I'm sure many of you have been to the Grand Canyon. It's really hard to talk about how it looks like. Well, yes, I'm comparing the Grand Canyon to this expansion space, but it's thirty-five thousand square feet, as we know, and it's thirty-foot ceilings. And it, I saw your face when you came in, Yade's face when you came to look at it, and Rick's and others. When you look at this space, that's going to host twelve, it's going to have twelve pickleball courts. It's going to have, just a reminder, it's going to have four basketball. Sarah will tell me if I've got something incorrect, and eight volleyball. And as we were leaving, she was also talking to someone about future volleyball, just tournaments that can come in the future. This space is really going to be a busy space. And while we're here talking about this, the first event has been booked for that space. It's in twenty twenty-five, and it's a cheer group from the Midwest. So we're excited about that a whole weekend, to bring lots of, lots of cheer groups here. So not only can it be all those different sports, it can be about anything, expo space as well. And on the bottom right corner, I believe, as you'll see there, is, we have the, in that court there, you see, you've got the basketball, like the arms coming down to the basketball. So we don't actually have to set up basketball. We just hit a button, and it comes down out of the ceiling, as far, as well as volleyball. Any questions on that beautiful picture?
Can you set up for like one big basketball game?
It's four court, so I would say no.
If you was wanting to track.
But, but no, there could be like, man, we're not going to have a lot of bleachers. It's not going to be like CBCC. That's what I mean. Well, it could be. So, yeah, it could just be one like the championship game. It could be one, but I was thinking, we don't have the bleachers like CBCC, but we're going to get bleachers. That's a great question. So right here, this space, the multipurpose space, also like a pre-function space, the late Mr. Lee Worele, who we all know and have honored, and as we remember him, as he passed away a couple of weeks ago, this was a space he talked about for years. And in this space, he and his family wanted to really focus on the walls and tell the story of our community, especially the furniture part. And so we are working on how that's going to end up, but the whole purpose, that space is going to be used for a lot of other things as well. Pre-function space, like I mentioned, association may have a president's reception in there before they go into the exhibit hall. So the space, again, it has this beautiful window that literally the last pane went in like at five thirty-five. So I suggest you come by and see it. It's pretty remarkable. So this space, just to remind you a little bit about the space, also, it can be shut off on its own side. It has its own restrooms, like the door will lock, it can have its own event in there as well. There's restrooms in that area, catered kitchen, another meeting room, which is great, and a door that goes to an outdoor terrace. So we haven't had an outdoor terrace yet, so that'll be a nice addition to our convention center.
How many folks will the outdoor terrace accommodate?
Well, let's think. I think, I don't know the exact, I would say probably a dozen to twenty. It's not a huge patio, but it's a way where someone can get a nice fresh air. And it's really close to the courtyard as well, so. Here we have, this was just taken last week, too, lots of dirt turning over there. That's positive. So we've got some curb and gutter, and, and then on the, about, so there's a lot of stuff happening. Again, if you drove by today, it looks completely different, and that was three, four days ago. Any questions about any of that so far?
Yeah, the, the parking on the right is along Fourteenth Avenue. You can see there are abandoned sixty-some odd spaces in there to try to accommodate some of what we're losing with the expansion.
That was a space where people were parking anyway, so I'm glad to see that you're utilizing that in an orderly fashion.
Right, exactly. And that is, we were going to bring some pictures on there. Warren has seen them, our board, and Mark Seaman, one of our board members as well, like people already parked there anyways. And so we're thankful for another, this is in addition to our project. We're thankful for Steve Miller, Caroline Cohen, of course, Rick has been giving me updates every week about this project, and it's going to have, like Mr. Wood said, sixty additional spots. Also, we're looking at other possible spots in that area that could be parallel parking, other, other parking opportunities we have in the future, but because we're going to need additional parking. But that's going to be extremely beneficial. It should be ready, I believe, by Easter, the end of March. And along with that, we are, just to let you know, with this slide, I was going to explain a few other things that we're doing in our original part of our building. It's a, it's a positive problem to have when you have so many people coming, right? So how do we make, what's the solution? When a lot of people move into shows, move out of shows, it's a lot of traffic congestion in the back. So we are going to add like a loading zone, which, again, getting help from Caroline Cohen, Steve Miller, Rick Beasley helping us work with this company to get an additional loading zone, which is going to be beneficial for our customers that are coming in and moving in. So that's good, you're going to see that dirt turning, too. And before I move on to meeting events, our, at our board meeting about two weeks ago, the TDA, we have been talking about this, we needed the money to, you know, obviously to pay off the debt in twenty years or less, hopefully fifteen, but we'll pay off that debt. But in addition, we have been, in our fund balance, been working on a budget that's going to help us do things in additional. We are going to, so this is in addition in our TDA, it's about two million dollars in addition to what we're doing, is we're going to redo the entire audio, I mean, audio visual on that entire building. The original building, the audio is getting a little worn, nineteen ninety-seven, that's been a while. And then also adding on to the new space, too, it's going to be just like this. Actually, we did some bids. We're working with the same company that did this space as well. And we're going to redo the entire, so you can hear things better. You don't hear the air conditioner coming on in the middle of an event, and the audio is, we're going to have more speakers, and it's going to be excellent, and it's going to be state of the art, it's going to be one of the best places as well with that.
Mandy, I think there, you know, in terms of budget, and that's why I want to ask this question now, I think there's some opportunities to make a more impactful first impression when you arrive at the convention center in terms of landscaping and how it looks outside. What are the plans there?
We are working on landscape, that's part of our addition as well, to update our landscaping. And fortunately, we work with a great company, but we also have someone on staff who's also developed all the landscaping at Salt Block as well. And so we're working on different plans for color, have more colorful look in different fall season as well around that. We're also going to update around the, I guess, around the parking deck. I think it needs a little freshening.
The east side, when you go to go back to the upper parking deck, that road, along that road, it's, there's, there's a lot of opportunity right there.
There is, and there's, and we've talked about that hill where we own, behind the CarMax, beside the CarMax, we have that parking lot. And then trying to figure out a way we could do some wildflowers back there or something.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
It may not, that's one of, on our projects as well.
Kind of related to that, and it's probably not y'all, do you know if there's any discussion or conversation with DOT related to the fence between the interstate and these new sixty spaces? I know some of that fence looks kind of dilapidated.
It does.
And I didn't know if there'd been any conversation with DOT about maybe fixing some pieces of that fence or making it more sturdy looking.
That's a good, that's a good comment. We'll work on that. I work with Mr. Beasley, and I will work on connecting with the NC DOT, again, because that would be a good safety net, too, to kind of make it stronger.
That fence needs some attention as well.
Right. And some other things along with that, we are going to update. So this was, we don't have pictures, but the next time, too, we are going to, and once you're doing the work in this building, and we're so thankful for the opportunity to do the expansion and the renovation, but we, now we need the old building to match. And so we are, the board approved for us to replace a lot of the carpet, redo the painting in the, in the Hickory section and the Conover rooms, those rooms as well, just to make it all match and work well together. And it's going to be a brand new building, basically. In addition, we're replacing the original roof on the building. So we're happy to do that. So now our job is to keep it full, get people in the hotels, fill the building, which I'm confident that our team can do that. And as we add to our team, we're going to do that. But we had to make these changes for, for us to keep bringing people here. Meeting.
Can I just say two things?
Yes.
So the good news is, we have two more hotels teed up to come forward, one by Bob Evans and one near the convention center. And all, everything that she just went over is funded through the hotel motel occupancy tax, which is a six percent tax on every dollar you spend in a hotel motel room here in Hickory. So those are not just city property tax dollars going towards that. So it's, it's a good model that we've got, and it's really unique for the state.
So can then you, with the two hotels going up, and the number of rooms that each one have, I guess you can project how much more additional revenue that you're going to be receiving from these two new hotels?
Yes. So it's a hundred and ninety rooms between those two, and there's conversations of some others on the block eventually, which are needed, not only to help us, just like Mr. Wood said, that occupancy tax pays for our building, not our property taxes. Occupancy tax pays for the building as we pay it off and operate, but adding those new hotels is not only going to help that, but we're talking with a meeting planners that need two thousand room nights, one night, two thousand rooms. And so that's a lot of hotel rooms. Not saying we're going to have two, so we're, we're hoping to build to that because that's going to help us as we bring larger events here. We would like all the guests that are staying and attending stuff at the convention center to stay in our area. So that's also another benefit.
How many hotel rooms are there in Hickory now? I mean, I have no idea.
Twelve hundred-ish. Hickory Conover and those rooms. I mean, that's where we collect the tax, Hickory Conover, the, I mean, the occupancy tax from those properties.
And how the mechanics, all that works with the money, is the city of Hickory owns the building, and then the TDA's lease payment equates to what the debt service payment is on the building.
And as you've alluded to, when this expansion is done, I believe you said that it will be larger than Winston-Salem's?
Well, I've been, that was what somebody told me.
Uh-oh.
So I've been going around for two years saying that.
Well, no, that's somewhat right.
Well, it's, it's, it'll be larger than Winston-Salem on one floor.
On one floor?
Yeah, so there's a little caveat there.
And with our, and with our competitors, which we're tier two, we're not competing against, well, we do have similar bits sometimes, but not Greensboro, not Charlotte, not Raleigh. But I mean, our Winston-Salem and Greenville, North Carolina, and other places.
Yeah, our niche is, you know, smaller than some of those big ones. It just has, one of the best events they have is the Septic Hallers.
Yeah.
People think, well, that's a really good event that they have. People come from all over and stay, stay the weekend, and that's just one example of a good niche kind of event that we have.
Mandy, I'm assuming that hotel motel is, that's the strict definition of those terms or of those structures. We're not talking about Airbnb's or anything like that.
Yes, we do collect Airbnb, Verbo, Priceline, all that's part of the occupancy tax, yes.
Okay, so six percent on all of that.
And within Hickory and Conover.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Yes. And we, the first six months of occupancy tax is in, so that's July to December, and it's at one point two million dollars. So we are where we thought we'd be this time of year, where we budgeted, and I believe we'll probably end up at about two point five, two six.
Excellent.
Which would be the highest that we've collected. Again, the average daily rate is much higher, and there's a lot of different factors, but as long as we stay on our budget.
They've done a really good job of balancing the construction with continuing to have events and drive the revenue in those hotel rooms and motel.
And that's unique to this municipality as well. I mean, most other municipalities, their motel tax doesn't go for the convention center. Is that correct?
Yeah, we, our legislation allows us to spend a certain percentage on it.
And that's one of the things that was set up in the eighties, because I've said this before, but our, our convention center is a destination. It's like the Field of Dreams, you know? In the eighties, when our cities came together and developed this, it happened, and there's, this is the third expansion, if you count another smaller, in the parking deck. So it is a destination, and we talked to our tourism partners. It's like our Panther Stadium, it's like our, it's like our Atlantic Ocean. I mean, it's, it's a destination. And we have a lot of other leisure destinations as well that are adding to the reasons so many people are coming here. But that's exactly what Mr. Wood said at every board meeting, Mr. Seaman, Mr. Wood, hear me this, and the board. We have, just like a hundred and thirty-three events since we broke ground. Same time period, a hundred and fifty, the year before, when we had the entire building open, not half the building open. Now, our staff's a little tired, but they keep smiling and working. We have, they're like, we have the North Carolina Cattlemen Association, they've been here ever since we opened. They've been here, and they could go, people want them to go to other places across the state, but they like it here, and they keep coming here, and they're working. It's a little challenging, it's been a little challenging day, but we can overcome that, and we're happy that they're going to be here. They'll be here for the next couple of days. So that'll be a good thing. What do we have next? Okay, marketing, how we market our area, of course, a lot of times, some people may not, our job is to really market outside our area to bring visitors here. But of course, we've done more marketing, really, you know, really educating people about the importance of tourism dollars in our community and how it benefits us all, not just us at the convention center, but it's going to benefit the restaurants, the gas stations, you all know that. And so we've really been trying to push that locally, that message. But also, this is a digital ad that went out, obviously, that really is pushing the import, our new amenities at the convention center. And once this goes out, the phone rings, the emails pile up, so it is making a difference. So I always like to share what our messages look, because unless you're on a sports media, if you're on a sports media list, you may not be getting this, and it's going out every This is awesome. So moving on, talking about more, more visitor hats. So in, this is in front of you is the North Carolina Travel Guide. So this has been around for decades, and we always place an ad in there because it's important. This goes to a million people or more across the world, not just across the United States. So we always buy an ad and it's a pretty expensive ad, and so a lot of times our partners, you know, help us pay for that. But as we know, everything's about relationships and people generally getting to know people. And every year, there is a, we'll go to a visit North Carolina Conference in, in, in Greenville next month, but Sarah sits with a different media and the people that actually put this travel guide together and pitches stories about our whole area. So this year, they came back and said, you know, we really want to come to Hickory and the area and we want to maybe do a story on you, do some pictures and say, I think Sarah got a two-day notice, three-day notice? Um, we're going to come into town and we need to take pictures and, and we don't, you know, we, we can't promise anything to you, but I'm excited to say that there is a full story about Hickory in the destination, uh, in the travel guide for North Carolina. And it's on page, it's on, it's in the, page seventy-eight. And I was chair of the CVB board years ago. We, this is something we always talked about. And then we've been talking about it for years. So we're thankful and I don't think this is going to be the last time. It's not going to take, um, forever to do this again. I think there's, as we know, there's a lot of buzz about Hickory, people moving here, people wanting to come here for so many different reasons. So that's pretty good news. So when you're somewhere and someone said, hey, I saw your downtown, I saw what you're doing in the Riverwalk in the travel guide, you know all about it because it's in here. And the other, a few other comments, Mr. Wood already mentioned one about our two new hotels. And the good news is, is we did a study recently and it said that we do need hotels and we've already talked about that as well, and talked about the occupancy tax and talked about the visit North Carolina, there is a tourism conference, just like you all have the League of Municipalities Conference, when all the elected officials come together in North Carolina and we're so excited when they're here. Well, they're going, we're going to be in Greenville, North Carolina in March, but that group is coming to Hickory in April of twenty twenty-five. And so I, we expect a lot of, not only our peers across the state in the tourism hat, but also you're going to have media writers from across the southeast and beyond coming here, experiencing this, experiencing this place for the first time. So we're really excited about that and we know that, uh, we will invite y'all to be a part of that as well because you'll want to speak. Everybody in the tourism industry is, of course, a lot of fun and we, uh, they always enjoy experiencing new things. Any questions for myself or Sarah?
I think, I think they've asked them as you've gone along.
Yeah, thank you.
Anybody else have any other questions?
What is the date that you're going to be completing?
That's a great question.
I knew that.
Summer.
She didn't say which year.
Summer.
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 This summer.
This summer. Summer of twenty twenty-four. Don't know if that's going to be June or if it's going to be September, but they're really, Hickory Construction is really wanting to do by July first. They, so that's the goal.
Right.
Fantastic.
That's not too far away.
It's not.
No, that's.